Calling the Monday, January 9th, 2023, Ellisville Town Council to order. And which one? Move those two apart from each other?
It's off.
It's off?
Yeah.
We've got ours off, you got yours off.
But don't they need to have them for cats?
Well, hang on.
Not if they make the equipment that noise. On or off is not the problem.
The problem's between the amplifier and the speakers. So it's not those, it's not the microphones.
Bad amplifier, bad speaker.
All right. We'll have to deal with it. Apologies to those on Zoom. Apologies to those watching elsewhere, and especially to those in the audience. But who has the pledge tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jimmy?
Our heavenly Father, we come before you in the seeing and thank you so much again to this little town we serve. We ask you be with us tonight. We invite our thoughts and our conversations. Be with us if you make the decisions that affect our community. In thy name, Jesus' name, amen.
Roll call, Sandy?
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
Dan Swafford?
Here.
All right. First thing on the agenda is election of officers, president and vice president.
I'll make a motion to elect William Ellis as president.
Second.
I'll accept the nomination.
Will we have to put that in the table? Do we have to put that in the table?
No, we can. I mean, I don't know.
What?
Should we add a caveat about April?
I don't know if we should say we're resigning. Yeah.
So you ready for roll call?
Hold.
Make a motion ten times until I can...
Yeah.
No, that's all right.
We can do that.
Okay.
So it'd be an amended motion.
Well, but you'll have to amend it.
It's just a nomination right now.
Right.
We're thinking something different.
Okay.
Trevor, could I prevail upon you to remove your motion from the floor and offer an alternative?
Go ahead.
I would move that we forego these elections until at least the first meeting in April and leave everything to status quo as it currently is. Because last year, we had to change mid-year. So give everybody a year to serve in their terms, and we can reevaluate the positions in April.
For vice president, president, that doesn't violate any laws or anything, does it?
What I would do... Do, I think there's a code that requires the municipality to select officers at the first meeting in January, so maybe it would be appropriate to have a motion for William Ellis to continue until April or something along those lines.
And Trevor.
And Trevor as vice.
Okay.
Just to keep...
So moved.
All right.
Second.
To keep it cleaner.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan, Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody. All right. Next thing is Plan Commission. There are two terms ending in 2022, appointed by council president. We need a Democrat and one Republican. For the Republican, it would be Don Calvert. Is Don here? I guess we'll appoint him. And then for the Democrat, Steve Hale. Steve, do you want to say just 30 seconds at the mic?
Sure.
All right. Yeah.
Hello? Want a brief introduction or...?
Yeah, just a brief introduction.
My name is Steve Hale. I've been a resident of Ellisville since 2007. I've ran for some offices prior. I've been a member of Monroe County Sheriff's Office for 22 years up until this past September when I retired due to a medical issue. Business in Ellisville here at Indiana Fitness Club. We've recently expanded to Bedford, as well as we're opening a Ford Gym in Paoli right now. So trying to do a lot of things within the community and outside as well. So I'd like to see what we can do to help Ellisville grow and expand.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Next is the Board of Zoning Appeals, appointed by council president, term ending in 2022, Zach Michael.
I believe we missed one.
We did miss one?
Dan being appointed...
Oh, yes, Dan, I'm sorry. I thought, yes.
To the Plan Commission, council vote.
Yes, council vote. Dan, do you wish to re-serve?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. Good catch, Darla. The print's tiny, and my glasses aren't doing their job.
So we need a motion.
Do we have council action on this?
I'll make a motion to appoint Dan Swafford to the Plan Commission.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Board of Zoning Appeals, we have a term ending in 2022, Zach Michael, that's appointed by the council president. Zach, has he indicated that he'd like to serve again?
I have not talked to Zach about this.
Okay. Do you know any?
No, I don't. I don't think so, but I will share with you.
That's one of my expanded duties, probably.
Okay. Darla, can we wait on this one?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's appointed by the Plan Commission at their next vote, their next meeting.
Yes.
All right. Now, fun one, Parks and Recreation Board, appointed by council vote, Amy Slabaw, her term ends in 2022, and I think that she would prefer that...
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
I talked to Laura here today, and she is cheerful today coming out.
Awesome.
Way right up, Laura.
You want Laura to just say a few words, too, Jimmy?
Yeah.
We can do that. Laura, come up and say something.
Let Laura get to it. Put her on the spot.
Yeah. She's going to kill me for that later, but...
Hello, I'm Laura Hale. I've lived in Ellisville for about 15 years. I have two little girls in the Edgewood School System. I was a registered nurse for about 12 years, and since then, just worked with our family business full-time.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have council action on this?
Move to appoint Laura Hale to the Parks and Recreation Board.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And I guess if we're... There's no action for them tonight, any paperwork or anything they need tonight or anything?
We'll have to get the paperwork.
Yeah, I'll have to get him some payroll information.
Okay. All right.
Do we swear again? No, okay.
I haven't done it in the past. It's up for debate right now.
We are still talking about that. All right. All appointments will be for a four-year term, and those will end in 2026. So, and these are the annual appointments by the town council. So should we just take all of these at once, or do all of these individually? Or how do we customarily do this? Because this is my first rodeo with this.
Well, I've written motions for all of them, so...
Okay. All right. So Monroe County Emergency Management Advisory Council, Kevin Patton. He's also our fire chief, if everybody didn't know. So do we have council action on that?
Kevin, are you wanting to stay on there?
Sir, that's fine.
I'm confused as well. We're not making a motion from each of these?
You don't have to if you don't want. I just wrote them all out, but it just keeps...
Okay, so I would just rather read all of them.
There's a block, yeah.
Right. So you're okay with that, Sandy, if we do that?
I am, yeah.
Okay. So we're going to do Monroe County Emergency Management Advisory Council, Kevin Patton, willing to serve. Monroe County Solid Waste District Board, Dan, are you still willing?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay. Ellisville Chamber of Commerce, Mike Farmer?
Yes.
Okay. Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, Pam?
Yes, that's the advisory board, the MPO advisory board.
Oh, okay. It's not on there, so I'm sorry. Thank you.
I've never put it on, and I apologize for that. Denise is the first person to advise me that, and I'd already done the agenda.
What is the difference?
There's also an MPO tag that I'm on.
Okay. Health Officer, Kevin, I'm going to do a couple hats today. And Bloomington Economic Development, we have four seats available for that. So Mike's one. You want to do that?
Yeah, I was one. I am likely on the executive committee with me. And then we have two general seats, and I'd like to have Denise appointed, as well as Noel.
All right.
And they go to the general meetings, whereas Pam and I go to the executive.
All right. All right. Do we have council action on this?
I'll make a motion to approve all annual appointments made by the town council this evening.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham? Did I already say Scott?
No. Yes.
And Pam Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, December 27th, 2022. Okay, I will make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting, December 27th, 2022.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
All abstaining, not present.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Abstaining, not present.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Action, pay accounts payable, vouchers, and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Who wants that second?
I'll take it. Are we keeping track, just out of interest?
Right.
Is there a scorecard? I've always wondered.
No.
It's like a bingo card.
Kind of.
Yeah.
William Ellis?
There's a payout at the end of the year, I think.
There is a payout? Is that one of the budget funds we did?
That was an over-under.
Oh, it's an over-under. You're right.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, I'll be looking at the minutes next to you, see how much of this got in it.
That won't be in it, I can tell you.
All right. Resolution 01-2023, cancellation of warrants, outstanding checks. I think Sandy put that on for me, because the first time I saw cancellation of warrants, I thought we had like a bunch of people to arrest, so...
This is just standard procedure. They've been outstanding for the maximum amount of allowed time, so we're just going to cancel those out, right, and get them off the books.
Okay.
So moved.
Oh, okay. William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pam Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 02-2023, temporary loan from rainy day fund to local income tax economic development fund.
Well, as you all know, that's a brand-new fund. It's a brand-new tax. We haven't gotten any receipts in it yet, but in the budget, we started paying people out of that for payroll. So I'm temporarily going to move $200,000 from the rainy day fund into that. As soon as I get $200,000 in that fund, I'll move it back.
Okay.
And I'll let you know when I do that.
All right. Council action?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2, 2023, temporary loan from rainy day fund to local income tax economic development fund.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance is on first reading. Ordinance 2023-01, to create a fund for evidence money. Jimmy?
This is something that we've worked with Darla, and this is, we have money in the evidence room that we need to put somewhere besides the evidence room. And the best place to put that is a bank account, a checking account, so that's what we're going to do. So we're inventorying now with the evidence room, and we should have it ready to go. We'll prove it next meeting. Hurry for the proof next meeting. Darla, you have anything to say?
No.
I would make a motion to table this, so we can have some further discussion.
Yeah, it's on the first reading.
Yeah, we had a potential going the other way.
Yeah.
I'll explain later.
So we don't need to table it, since it's just first reading?
Right. But if we're going to go there.
Yes, exactly. That's...
Oh, I...
Was that just from the last time?
I just put that out in case, because sometimes it comes up and...
Gotcha, okay.
And I have worked with Zach Michael on this, and, you know, there was some current concern about evidence, but this money is more safekeeping money. It's...
Let's discuss...
Not evidence in a drug bust.
Right.
You have to keep pictures of the money and serial numbers and all that, yeah.
Let's discuss this a little bit more before we go down this road, because I think there's a couple pitfalls to doing it this way that we might be able to avoid.
Okay. And the way I designed it now, it would be a standalone fund, but, you know, it wouldn't be its own checking account. It would be commingled in the general fund checking, but be...
I get it.
Got it.
Let's have that discussion if we can.
See no ordinances on second reading. Flood report, Mike?
I have nothing with flood report.
In vision Ellisville update, Dan?
Dan, Dan Murray, envision Ellisville, and the chamber. This is a little redundant, not much has happened over the holidays, but we formed an advisory board to work with the town on the implementation. The members are Krista Curtis, Donna Neese, Dr. Sanders, Lisa Cisco, Paul Quick, and myself. And the first three task forces are business, connectivity, and gathering, and we're still asking people if they've got an interest in any of those to step forward. We'll have a meeting, our next meeting is Thursday, and then the task forces are going to be meeting before the end of the month. So we're going to get things geared back up again.
All right.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. On to new business. Automatic aid agreement with Monroe Fire District. I'm assuming correctly, probably that would be Kevin.
You assumed correct.
All right.
We currently have a, we'll call it a gentleman's agreement through the county 911 system that we respond to mainly structured fires into their area and vice versa, but that doesn't make ISO, which is the company that determines what your insurance rates are. So the only thing this is, is just the legal document that says we're going to do this, makes them happy, hopefully so the insurance rates continue to stay low.
So do we have council action on this, or is this something you have to? Do we have to approve this?
No, this is something that you guys, if you approve it, will sign off on it, and then it goes to the district board, and they'll do the same, because this is a, I guess, contract, if you will, between the two governmental entities. All we currently have is, like I said, just between the chiefs.
Any council discussion on this? Any public comment? Seeing none, back to council action.
I move to approve the automatic aid agreement with Monroe Fire District.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Agreement between the Town of Ellisville and Bynum Fanyo Utilities LLC, water, wastewater, and town manager.
Obviously, as we discussed earlier, we're trying to extend our contract out to 2033, which would be a 10-year contract versus 2032.
2032.
2032, and includes the town manager's pay for Mike Farmer within our contract until the board decides that they want to go a different direction, then we would remove that from our contract. Pretty much the rest of the contract is as it's always been.
Council discussion?
I thought we were going to do two separate things, Darla. Isn't that what you...
That would be my suggestion, is to just take out that little piece with regard to the town manager, and just do a little short contract.
For the town manager's position.
Right, separate.
So they'll just be voting on the water or wastewater?
But I thought the clause in there saying that it could be terminated by us?
Yes, that's what, that language hasn't changed.
Okay.
Under Article 5, it allows the town to terminate the agreement upon 90 days, or Bynum Fanyo to terminate upon 90 days.
Well, the town manager part, I thought, was separate, that was still under our purview, and we could terminate?
Yes, but I guess I'm assuming that, maybe wrongly, that that would be on the next agenda, and I would just do a little short piece.
Okay.
Or just a, like, a one-pager for the town manager. But I'll put the termination language in there, too.
And the town manager's position will be a salary or a...
Contract, in a contract.
Yeah, contract, so it doesn't really matter when we approve it, you'll still get the same pay.
Right. I mean, we can, I can put some language in there that makes it retroactive to January 9th, that that makes everybody more comfortable. That's fine.
The prices that are in your contract, I don't know, toward the back, did that include the town managers? Because we might need to adjust those numbers.
No, town manager, if you look at the contract, the town manager's pay is seven.
Okay.
Why are we doing two different ones?
So then we can just mark that out, Darla, if it's an existing contract?
Would it be easier just to table this and get fresh ones next meeting?
It's up to them if they want to wait, or it's up to you if you...
I mean, this really doesn't hurt anything. I don't, it's up to you guys.
We always bill at the rear, so we do not send you a general, a month, a general bill until February 1st.
So we can do it the next time.
So is it all right with you to just clean copies next time?
All right.
Counsel?
Scott's got a clarification.
Right, right, because the statute for town manager states that you can either hire him as an employee, or if you do an independent contractor, the town manager can be employed to serve for a definite tenure, not to exceed the longest remaining term in office of the town council members at the time of his or her hiring. And then the ordinance that the town adopted at the time Jim Davis was appointed town manager was that same language. You've got the limitation on there for the contract, no more than. But as I understand it, the rest of the council still wants me to put the language in there saying either party can terminate upon 90 days' written notice.
How's the council feel?
So in other words, I don't think you can do a contract with the town manager for 10 years.
So Scott, are you okay with table on this till next meeting? Well, hang on, I got a quick question. Maybe, maybe not. Can we write an evergreen clause in there, so we don't have to visit this every four year? Barring the, barring motions of the council, it continues on evergreen until... For the town manager? Yeah.
Can I think about that?
Sure. Can I ask why? Because it leads uncertainty as to what we're going to do at the very last minute, whereas we need continuity for a leader of a government. Did you cue that? Just a little many things I can do, Dan.
And you're talking about just the evergreen clause for the town manager, not...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because the other one's already 10 years. I mean, I don't have any problem with it. I just, I guess I just don't understand, we, like, reappoint all these every year. I just... Because that's by statute. Here, we're doing a contract with an individual contractor, and this gives us continuity and gives the general public continuity, and gives businesses that we're dealing with continuity. And again, the town council can intercede any one time on 90 days' notice, or they can decide when the contract's coming up for renewal that they don't want to renew it. But here, we don't have to worry about it. It just continues in perpetuity, so we really, realistically, don't have to touch it until somebody's ready to opt out. But then I think that would be a conflict because of what Darla stated earlier, because it cannot exceed the longest member of the council. So an evergreen clause would in fact exceed... No, it doesn't.
The evergreen would be a next, a year-to-year extension.
No, it would be a four-year extension.
Every four.
Without us touching it, but we're only appointing him for four years. But barring, barring some type of movement from a council, it continues again.
It's as of that we passed it and said he gets it?
Yes.
Without actually having to put it on the agenda?
Without actually putting it on the agenda and deal with it.
Well, can I think about that?
Sure.
And see what I can come up with?
Yeah.
What's the rest of the council's thoughts about that?
Well, I, you know, I'm okay with it as long as Darla is. I mean, to me, that's, that's just contradicting, though. So, I mean, if we do an evergreen, I mean, we're contradicting the original thing where we can't do a contract longer than the longest member of the council. No, because they're new contracts. It's a new contract. It renews itself.
The contract's renewed automatically.
Right, but I think it should be renewed with a motion with a new council. That way, I mean, because it's up to Darla.[1475.23]
That way, I mean, because it's up to Darla. I don't care one way or the other, I really don't.
Well, one thing I do have a question against Darla again. With the 90-day termination clause, let's say a council, a new council comes in and wants to sever that. Well, that new council's sworn in on the 1st of January. They wouldn't have 90-day notice to do it.
They wouldn't have, they wouldn't have to.
That's true. If the new council decided they didn't want Mike Farmer to be the town manager, they would have to give 90 days' notice. So you wouldn't be able to get a new person in until April or whatever, every year.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I just.
Well, because, I guess here's, by way of explanation, by the way this would come up, assuming we do it now, then the way it sets up, the majority of the council is new as his comes up. So we need continuity, because you would not have that. Because the potential for three brand-new council people setting this council, who have no idea what a town manager does or doesn't do, is there.
Right.
They still have the option at one point in time to opt out, meaning we want to go a different direction. But you still have at least 90 days' worth of continuity between whoever's coming in, whoever's going out. So this council remains stable, and the government remains stable.
I don't disagree with that. I just want to make sure that four-year thing, the policy.
Right.
That's not gonna conflict with that.
No, that's the 90 days out.
Okay.
That's why we have that in there. Again, because the way.
Yeah, we don't necessarily want a town manager gone, and then, oh, let's go find another one.
Well, and the thing that I don't want is, we want, Indiana sets towns up to fail. Where it takes three out of five to be a boss, and when three of the people are brand-new, you have to have somebody running the day-to-day operations. Because potentially, three people, brand-new, have no idea how to run the operations.
Right.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion on the table for this agreement? Are we severing? Are we tabling everything? What, what are we wanting to do?
I move we table the town of Ellisville and Bynum Fanyo's contract, and the town manager's contract.
That's just to be, so they can correct it, because the.
The dollar amounts are.
Separate the two.
Gotcha.
Does that put you in a bind, Joe?
No, no, no.
Okay.
As I spoke earlier, we don't bill, we bill everything in arrears, so we won't bill for January until February 1st, so.
Okay. All right. So, second?
Darla, if you see a problem in anything, can you give us a heads-up before the next council meeting?
Ready for the vote?
Yep.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Vote tabled. Assistant planner position, I think Denise has some great news to announce.
Yes, this has been a long time coming. Mike Farmer and I interviewed Mike Burns two times, had him in just last week. And we interviewed a total of three. It was a very hard decision, very good candidates. But Mike has experience with building and permits, and the main part of his job's building department. So I'm requesting to hire, Mike Burns has the assistant planner. And he is here in the audience.
You want to step up and introduce yourself real quick? Yeah.
Hello, I'm Mike Burns. I'm fairly new to the Ellisville area. I moved here in November 2020, being a longtime resident in northern Indiana, where I was involved with the family construction business. So I did many things there, and a lot of it involved around permits and so forth, so.
Awesome. All right, well, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
And he will start Wednesday, if he's approved.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any public comment? Actually, no. Any council actions, is what I actually had meant to say.
Mike Burns.
I would move to approve the hiring of Mike Burns as assistant planner.
Second.
Go ahead, give it to Pam.
Someone's filling up their bingo card tonight on seconds.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
I'll be recusing myself from voting, right?
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
And thank you, Denise.
Welcome aboard.
Yep. And I think this is probably Denise again, grant agreement with the Community Foundation of Bloomington and Monroe.
Yes, this grant is to move the log cabin on Vine Street up here and preserve it. So the grant's for $44,152, and that is our share. Our matching funds come from ARPA funds. So there's an agreement that outlines what we're to do, when it's to be completed, and reporting. So I'm requesting permission for the president to sign it. And the agreement has been reviewed by Darla.
Okay. Any council discussion? Public comment? Council action?
I move we approve the grant agreement between the Community Foundation of Bloomington and Monroe.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Privilege of the floor, anybody want to comment on anything that's not on the agenda? From the public, seeing none. Supervisory comments?
Yes, I apologize for not having this on the agenda. We have recruited and interviewed an employee that we'd like to replace, one of our labors in the Department of Public Works. And we have interviewed Zach, Zachary Eads, and myself, and Kip, and a couple other people. Interviewed him, and he comes well-recommended. He's got, oh, Jeff, sorry.
And the other guy.
Yeah.
The other guy, the other guy that's.
Whatever his name is, yeah.
Sorry. And so he comes from the city of Bloomington. He's got seven years of experience, so multi-different skill sets for the street department, while making him a utilities man, too. And he's gonna fit right in with what we've got planned for the next couple of years. So I'd like to recommend him for a Labor 1 position, salary $61,200. And I just need your approval.
Is he here tonight?
He is not.
Okay. Any council discussion?
Where will he be working out of, utilities or street?
Yes. Someday, we won't ask that question anymore. He, to make this more complicated, so we have two other employees that will be asking for you to hire as well for us in the next couple of months. We want to be full strength when we start the NLT grant, and three or four other large capital projects. So in the next two years, it'll be hard to decide where he's going to be in. But we can work those details out. I mean, do you need to know right now?
No.
All right. Council action?
Make a motion to approve the hire of Zachary Eads for the position of Labor 1.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Jimmy?
Yes, thank you. I handed out, supplied you with a resolution. It won't be ready, actually, till next meeting. It's accepting the gift from the Senior Citizens Housing Incorporated to the town of Ellisville of the cabin, the old Morrison Wright cabin. And basically, it says, "The town of Ellisville hereby accepts the gift of Morrison Wright Vine Street Log Cabin from Ellisville Senior Citizens Incorporated. The town assumes all responsibility of insuring, relocating, the log cabin as of the date determined, and hereby releases Senior Citizens Housing from all liability and damage of the cabin." And I also have the copy of the insurance that will take effect when we take over the cabin, also have a copy of the cabin statistics there where it's at. What brought this along was the ground, Marion's, or Marion's ground, yeah, but Morris's ground has gone to Marion's son, and he's wanting to get out of there. It'll be, the only thing that the town owns, or the senior citizens own ground-wise, is what the cabin actually sits on. And they're gonna do a quick, as soon as we get it out of there, they'll do a quick deed turnaround for him. So really pretty simple, but I thought you might have some questions on it. If you do, I've got, I've got some material here for you to look at.
So this will be voting on next week?
Next, in two weeks.
Next two, yeah, next meeting, sorry.
And just want to let you know, too, we've got two sergeants positions open in the department, and one will be filled the next meeting, the SRO sergeant's position, and then one will be filled in the second meeting in February, so.
Okay.
Thank you for your support on that, I appreciate it.
Jeff? Kevin? Kip? Denise?
I have something.
All right.
So over the last seven months, all, I just want to let you know, all the departments helped planning immensely. We were just so busy. So I just need to thank all the departments and the town manager. And then I feel that Kip's probably gonna scringe next time he hears me say, "Kip, I need you to stop by, or we gotta have a meeting." But I just want to let you know that of all the grants, Kip's usually the one who calculates materials and measurements and everything for me, so I'm just so appreciative of that. But anyway, I just wanted to thank everybody for helping me over the last seven months.
So Kip, you actually calculate that? I thought you just guessed.
I'll leave your shoe.
Okay, you leave your shoe, okay, that's pretty good. All right. Thank you, Denise. Sandy? Okay.
All right.
And council comments?
I'd like to say something real quick. Just like to thank Mike Farmer for being the town manager over the past few years and not getting paid for it. I really glad to see that we're gonna get this taken care of, and get you the money you need. I know it may sound like, a lot of times, I'm not with you, but it's just questions I ask. Nothing personal, but I want to thank you for all the work you do, and I want to thank you really for donating your time for Ellisville, too.
More than welcome.
Thank you.
Trevor?
I have nothing.
Well, we did pay Mike. He got two tanks of gas a year extra, right? Wasn't it something like that?
We don't buy.
No, no, not whilst buying it, but you saved it. Yeah, we helped him save money, so.
Oh, okay, got it.
Great job. Yeah, so, well, I'd like to keep on you. I just want to thank everybody. The last year has been, we did the largest budget, I think, in Ellisville history. And I think we did a very good budget. I'm excited about what 2023 is bringing in police and fire. I'm glad our employees are starting off at wages that are competitive, and I think we're gonna see hires reflective of that. And the supervisors have done a great job of just kind of dotting their i's and crossing t's and helping each other. It is a team. And I cannot thank enough that being part of that, I'm very humbled by it. Thank you. Anything? Anything, Pam? All right. With that being said, we are adjourned.